We'll come to order, roll call please, Addy.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yeah.
Ms. Sarni?
Yeah.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Murray? Ms. Cardello?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Present.
Mr. La Monica? Mr. Abaze?
Here. Seven members present. Ms. Murray contacted me, said she could not attend tonight. We have a quorum, so let's begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Okay, Roman numeral number three, reading of the records.
Motion to waive the reading of the records and place them on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to waive the reading of the records and place on file. Roll call vote please, Addy.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes. Seventy affirmative, motion passes. Roman numeral four, public comment. Gage, do we have someone scheduled for public comment?
There's no one waiting.
I guess first we have to do a motion to open for public comment, is that accurate?
I'll make a motion to open public comment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the meeting up for public comment. Roll call please, Addy.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes. Seventy affirmative, we are now open for public comment.
We have no one, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
One second.
Motion made and seconded to close public comment. Roll call please, Addy.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes. Sixty affirmative, one in opposition, public comment is closed. Roman numeral five, reported superintendent. Welcome, Madam Superintendent, to Heliad.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to all of you and to everyone watching at home. So we're going to start this evening with a school reopening update. Just want to share our screen. I'm sorry, give you one second. Alright, so the 2021 school year is underway. Our fully remote learning model, our e-education in Everett model commenced on Tuesday, September 15th. So we have finally returned to synchronous teaching and learning, and we are finally back with our students, which we are very grateful for. So what lies ahead is an immense opportunity for improvement, advancement, and refinement as we move forward. So as the days and weeks pass, all of us will develop more confidence and comfort. We will build the capacity of our students, and we will make the absolute most of this unprecedented school year. Tonight's presentation is one I've been waiting very many months to deliver, one that details the actual day-to-day operation of the Everett Public Schools, and one that is set against the backdrop of live teaching and learning. It's also one that highlights the fact that we are finally back together as a district. We are no longer imagining remote learning, we are now fully experiencing it, and we are learning from it. And we will be the better for it. So this optimism is not springing simply from my mind, but it is also based on what I saw last week, which is what I would like to share with you. So obviously, I had the pleasure of visiting all of our schools last week. After months of planning every facet of the reopening, it was fantastic to see our dedicated professionals putting the district's plan into action. What I saw above all else was a collective group of teaching, teachers and staff and administrators doing everything possible they could to help our students and families with this transition. While a great majority of our students are participating in e-education from home, there was a soothing buzz in our buildings last week. There was activity and energy, but it was controlled and positive. Problems arose and people solved them. I saw this at every level of our district, whether it was a custodian quickly responding to an operational issue in an e-learning center, to one of our new family liaisons providing in-person help to a family. So as you might expect, the moments from last week I will never forget are those that revolve around seeing our young students interacting with their classmates and their teachers. Sheer happiness has been, you know, in short supply over the last six months, but that is what I saw last week. I saw teachers smiling and enthusiastically engaging their students. There is no substitute for watching the in-person interaction between teachers and students, but given the circumstances that we are in, I was very happily satisfied to see the smiling faces of our teachers being met by the smiling faces of our students through computer screens. Last Tuesday, I was as nervous as I was on my first day as a teacher, but my nerves were quickly calmed as I got to visit our schools. I arrived first at the Parlin School, where Principal Dennis Lynch and his staff oversaw a very orderly arrival process. Inside the Parlin, my fears turned to delight as I got to watch our teachers doing what they do best. My final realization that the school year had absolutely and unequivocally started occurred when I listened to a teacher explain to her very little ones to remember that they shouldn't wear their pajamas to class even if it is on Zoom, and another teacher who played a game with her students using flashcards of a microphone with a mute signal on and one with a mute signal off to have them practicing turning off and on their sound. That feeling did not diminish as I visited all of the other schools, Everett High, the Madeline English, the Kavarian, the Lafayette, and the Whittier Schools. The other locations where we are hosting our e-learning centers, I saw just as much energy. I saw clean and orderly buildings that have effective signage on walls and floors, hand sanitizing and PPE stations, plenty of bottled water, and most importantly, our dedicated paraprofessionals and staff members overseeing it all. With all of that said, we must also recognize the frustrations and difficulties everyone is facing in different ways and at different times during this process. As one teacher said to me, virtual teaching has made her more sympathetic to the parents of our students, and I think that sentiment is shared by all of us. To be more specific, during the first week of school, our teachers rightfully shared concerns about those students who did not yet have technology, Chromebooks in particular, to participate in e-education. So with each passing day, we are building the capacity of our students by closing technology gaps. Just last week, we received hundreds of iPads for our youngest students and hundreds of Chromebooks for students who didn't receive one in the spring. We also have Wi-Fi hotspots to distribute to families with no or unreliable internet access. I thank our families so much for their patience as we've done everything within our power to procure technology and equipment as quickly as we can, even though much of it is heavily backordered. But I am thrilled to report that the families eligible for round one of our technology distribution were notified via email last week that they can pick up their materials beginning tomorrow. So families who could not be reached by email last week, if their emails bounced back or we were just unable to get them, they were called today by our administrative assistants, so that was over 200 phone calls. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the many staff members who have worked tirelessly on our tech distribution. So this slide includes a photo of the staff who scanned, labeled, and registered the delivery of Chromebooks, iPads, and Wi-Fi hotspots last Friday and then again today. We will announce further distribution information as we receive additional stock and schedule those delivery dates. Now, for a slight change of pace, we actually have a short video prepared for you by our TV studio. It features our educators at work and gives you kind of a feel for what e-education looks like as our teachers either deliver live instruction to their students or film recorded lessons. So hopefully you will enjoy this. So as you can see, it looks a little different from our normal school year, but we are so excited to have so many of our teachers so enthusiastic about being back with their students, even if it is in a slightly different circumstance than what we generally experience. So we are pleased to report that we also opened up our doors at the Kavarian, Lafayette, Whittier, Parlin, English, and Everett High School on the first day of school. And as of today, we have accepted 578 students in our e-education learning centers. So the video that you just saw were teachers who were teaching their e-education, and those were teachers who had elected to do that from their classrooms, but we also have the e-education learning centers in the buildings as well. Students were confirmed for their assigned ELC slot based on their indication of not showing any COVID symptoms, their IP status, their reason for needing the ELC, and the timestamp of their application. So the first week of school, we registered all students who submitted a registration request at the ELC unless they indicated that they were experiencing symptoms. We have made a commitment to the Everett School Community to offer e-education learning centers, and these are providing a safe space for our students to access this e-education at home, especially for our families who are essential workers or who may find it difficult to provide consistent supervision for our students. So in our e-education learning centers have been staffed with proctors who are able to help students log into their Zoom classes and virtual learning platforms, manage masks breaks, meals, and recess. Our proctors speak several languages such as English, Spanish, Portuguese, Haitian Creole, or French. Some families indicated they needed the ELC because they did not have reliable internet at home, and for those families, we actually contacted them and we helped them complete the technology needs survey to obtain a hotspot instead. Obviously, if they need the e-learning center for different reasons, we would be offering it, but if it was just technology that was the barrier, we wanted to make sure they knew that we have hotspots available. Families who indicated lower priority reasons such as wanting their child to be with friends were waitlisted as we are balancing our capacity at each school, where staffing has recently shifted or changed. But it is noteworthy to mention that there are students who are on the waitlist to attend their regularly assigned school for an e-learning center. However, we do have capacity in buildings that are not the students' regularly assigned school. So we are contacting families about attending a school that is different from their assigned school if capacity is available. And so that way, even if they do want to attend one, it may not be the school that they normally go to, but they would still have an opportunity to attend one. On Thursday, September 24th, we will be going through the attendance from all of the schools and seeing which students have not attended any of the registered days. We'll then follow up with those families just to make sure everything's okay and they don't need the spot. We will then be working on a procedure to open up seats to those on our waiting list for their assigned schools to best accommodate the requests from our families. So on this next slide, you'll see that we are continuing to assess the air quality of our schools, and we do have good news about that. We are doing this first and foremost to ensure the safest possible conditions at our e-learning centers, and we are doing it to best prepare our buildings throughout the three phases of our reopening. It is possible in many areas to work on multiple tracks to meet the immediate needs of our e-learning centers and also to best prepare for the arrival of our larger groups of students during phase two and three of our plan. So ongoing HVAC assessment and modification is a prime example of this, and that is the approach that we are taking. We contracted with YourHot Environmental Solutions, who are certified indoor air quality professionals and were referred to us by the facilities maintenance department from the city. All school buildings were tested on September 10th or 11th. There were different types of tests performed at each building as well as, you know, for tests for temperature, relative humidity, and CO2 readings taken at each building. In terms of testing for air quality, no less than five and up to 15 air samples were collected from random locations throughout each school building. The samples were collected using Zefron mini pump onto aerosol cassettes and analyzed at a lab in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. Mold spore levels were identified and compared to those levels found outside on a typical New England school day. The findings from the testing air quality indicated that there were no elevated levels of mold spores, particulates, or other background debris found. The mold spore levels were well below the acceptable limits for good indoor air quality based on the industrial hygiene standards and below what one could be exposed to on a typical day in New England. The results indicate that at the time of testing, the buildings have sufficient filtration and airflow and that air quality is safe for building use. In terms of testing sample surfaces, no less than 10 and as many as 15 swab tests were performed on random surfaces such as desktops, doorknobs, bathroom stalls, light switches, and other areas which are considered high-touch surfaces and would have the potential to spread germs if not disinfected properly. The swabs are examined in a self-contained device and analyzed through the use of a luminometer. There are three possible results, less than 10 indicating the surface has been sufficiently disinfected. 11 to 29 indicates a warning, meaning that a surface is not adequately cleaned and disinfected, and greater than 30, which indicates that the surface is dirty. The findings at the time of testing indicated that all surfaces were found to have been well-disinfected. Finally, temperature, relative humidity, and CO2 readings were also taken. These readings are completed to test that the temperature and relative humidity is within the range for an indoor environment and that the CO2 levels are within recommended ranges in comparison again to the outside air. So these results allow a determination as to the effectiveness of the ventilation systems and that sufficient fresh air intake is actually occurring. So the findings at the time of testing indicated that all temperatures, relative humidity, and CO2 readings were well within recommended ranges and an indication that our HVAC systems are working properly, including a sufficient fresh air intake distribution through the tested areas. So to summarize, the results provide us with a measurement that at this time of testing, the air quality inside our buildings is within range and quality of the outside air. Our cleaning and disinfecting protocol at this time are providing a safe environment as well, and our HVAC system is providing proper ventilation, temperature control, and fresh air intake. So this means that the results are excellent. Our cleaning disinfectant protocols are working and our HVAC systems are doing what they are meant to do. In terms of recommendations for future action, we are considering random testing to be completed again after the buildings become more and more occupied. We're also considering individual air purifiers in buildings or classrooms just for when we have a higher number of students and staff within those spaces, and we are exploring and equipping our HVAC systems with HEPA filters if possible. So in response to a question that was raised during the last school committee meeting, I wanted to provide an update on our efforts to enable families to receive text messages from the district. So as of late last week, more than 2,700 families had opted into the service by texting yes to 67587. Obviously, we want this number to grow, and we will regularly be monitoring the metrics to check that they are trending upward. In the short term, we will encourage our family liaisons too to share this information with families, which will increase participation. In the meantime, we are utilizing the text feature on a regular basis. Our most recent message was a direct link to an interest form for families who are interested in taking a tech class on the basics of some of the platforms that are essential to e-education. Also, during the reopening planning process, we were asked to help families update their contact information as individuals change their cell phone numbers and email addresses during the course of the school year. So we have posted a quick and easy form in four languages on our website that allows families to easily update this information. To date, more than 1,100 people have filled out the form. Every week, we give the appropriate data to each school so staff can input the information into our X2 system. And then in conclusion, I want to briefly talk about a reality that fortunately will become more prevalent as we move into the 2021 school year. Namely, everything we are doing is not simply a reaction to COVID-19. On the contrary, I think we are actually making changes that are designed to permanently improve our district. We are offering services that will assist families not only today, but also in our future, and we are seeing that this paradigm shift come to life. The family liaisons we have hired are a prime example of this. These 16 individuals who can provide assistance in French, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, and Spanish will be integral to engaging families over the long term, not just this year. Certainly, we will utilize them to make large-scale connections with parents and students, but their impact will also be felt on a personal level as well. Last week, while I was visiting the Kavarian School, our liaison Steve August was intently working with the family to fill out an e-learning center registration form. This is just a simple but ideal example of how our liaisons can help a family on the spot and in the moment. Secondly, we have seen a tremendous immediate impact from our telephonic translation service, Lion Bridge. So this chart shows how many calls we have taken with the help of this service in a very short period of time. What the chart does not show, but which is a crucial point to point out, is that it represents questions that were answered or issues that were clarified or problems that were solved. As one teacher said to me last week, and I quote, "The service made such a huge difference in getting students connected." So to reiterate, we are making changes that are designed to permanently improve our district, and we are seeing this paradigm shift immediately even after just two weeks of implementing it. We are offering services that we truly believe will assist our families not only today or tomorrow, but at any time in our future. So at this time, I welcome any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrows, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to first thank the superintendent for the presentation and also our staff members, especially those who are in our e-learning centers. I went last week to, I stopped by the high school, and my goal was just to see how things were, talk to them, ended up staying there for almost two hours, talking to our family liaisons, looking at how know, they're interactive students, getting suggestions from them, which I read past on to the superintendent. Spoke with folks in our cafeteria. And the idea of learning, of opening the learning centers, it was just fantastic. I was a little skeptical, I have to say, because of the coronavirus situation, but what I saw, there were first kids that really needed to be there. Students who, you know, are first time coming to the schools, they are learning English. I saw the interaction with the teachers in their computers. And our parent liaisons, we speak several languages, like assisting them, translating to the teacher sometimes, helping them with emails, like it was like a family environment, which I was, and they were not doing that because the school committee member was there. Actually, I was looking at that even before they realized that I was there. So I think the learning center idea was just fantastic and I was so happy with what I saw there. Of course, as the superintendent mentioned, there are now areas of improvements that are kids who still don't have Chromebooks, but they have now. But it's just like, I invite those who don't know the reality of our district and our families to see that, even with, under the circumstances that we are under COVID. That idea of the learning centers was crucial to us, because I couldn't, those students that I saw there, I could not picture them at home by themselves, learning through a computer because one of their parents are not home. Their parents are working almost 24 hours. They do not speak English. They do not have technology, no high skills on technology, so it'd be even harder for them to assist their kids. So I just want to say that. I was very happy with the learning centers, and I'm glad that more students are going, and there are others in the waiting list by based on the superintendent's presentation, because the need is there, and they were not, you know, like, of course, they wish they were interacting with their classmates and chatting and doing what normal kids like to do, but they were like, they're seated, if they had to go to the bathroom, our family liaison or a teacher, which I saw a special teacher in high school, was like following them to the bathroom, they were coming. They were coming back, and back to the computer, back to their class, they could go outside, but they were wearing masks all the time that they were there, they were hand sanitizers, so it was a great idea, and I just want to congratulate the superintendent, but also the staff that I saw there, and who, you know, they are crucial for that to happen, because as I said, and I'll end on that, those kids really needed to be there. I could not see them, like, studying from home. They probably wouldn't be studying from home if we didn't have that. So I just want to thank everyone for that and share what I saw there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Madam Superintendent. Were there, was there any overall attendance issues even from e-learning from home?
We, I don't actually have the numbers, but I will get them for you, because we are taking what is now considered virtually present and virtually party. And so we definitely have been reaching out to some students who we know haven't come. We do have some students who are coming and like utilizing their phone because they don't have a Chromebook. So we can get you those disaggregated results, but right now, again, we are just trying to make sure that we're calling to see what the issue is, making sure we're getting Chromebooks, because most of the times when they were absent, it was because they didn't have a device.
Okay. And even if we could break it down by grade, because I think the issues will differ by grade. And again, you know, as a parent, fantastic job, and thank you to all the teachers, and especially all the parents. It's been an interesting week, you know, and I think we've all seen how much teachers put into it, but also how much the parents are there supporting. And so thank you, and just a reminder to, lunch is available and breakfast, 3 to 4 at all the schools every day, so make sure you go grab some.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Superintendent.
All right, so for number two, at this time, I would like to respectfully request your permission to bring forward our Chief Financial Officer, Anu Jan, to present on our eight entitlement grants.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bring forth, Anu. Roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé.
Yes, so many affirmative. Anu, welcome.
Sorry, I was muted there for a second. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school committee members. Thank you for having me today. We have eight grants up for approval totaling $4,657,877. The first seven grants, Title 1, 2, 3, 4, Perkins and IDA are all entitlement grants that we receive every year based on poverty data and our student need. I can provide any additional information you may need on this, on these grants as well. The eighth grant, I would like to thank school committee member Marconi Almeida Barros for helping us secure the MHSA grant for $25,000. This grant is in its third year of funding, and the money is used to serve homeless unaccompanied youth who are enrolled at Everett High. More details on this grant are also available if needed. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Grants as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept these grants as presented. Roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé.
Yes, so many affirmative, motion passes, and from the chair, thank you, Mr. Barrows, as usual, for your outstanding work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Barrows.
I just want to thank the Mass Housing Shelter Alliance for giving us this grant. When I joined this school committee, when our sport appointed, I brought them to Everett High to meet the realities of some of our students, and together we launched this pilot program, which was never launched in any high school across the state, Everett High was the first one, where through that grant, we will be able to pay the rent for some of our kids who did not have a place to call home. And we were going to analyze the data in terms of graduation and attendance. And in that first year, out of the kids who received this funding assistance, 80% of them graduated from Everett High. And the number was very low before, because, you know, they didn't have a place, they didn't have home, they just drop out of high school, showing that with housing assistance and management and assistance through our school, they were able to succeed. That was $30,000, and then the second year, I reached out to them again, then they offered $25,000 because also successful, and again, we had 80% of our kids who received assistance through this grant graduated in our class, and now they are coming back, reached out to them again, they are coming back with 25. So it's been $80,000 that we've been able to bring, but I think they, I just want to thank them, you know, for answering the call for help, but also showing how housing assistance and providing assistance to our kids who don't have, you know, who are like sleeping in shelters, parents kicked them out of the house, parents moved to another country, they stay. How important it is, you know, not the grant itself only, but to provide, you know, this kind of assistance for our students. So I just want to thank from the bottom of my heart, Joe Feen, who is the president of the Mass Housing Shelter Alliance, for coming back on the third year to provide this grant. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Back to our superintendent.
Thank you so much. So number three is regarding our handbooks and manuals. Before I ask to bring up Mr. Obramski to present the handbooks and manuals, I did want to bring up that at the last school committee meeting, the employee handbook and student handbook came up, and they were tabled for a later date. I did want to let you know that we are diligently working on updating those handbooks. We are in the process of developing some new policies. There's actually some updates to the Title IX policy that we're learning about just this week. So those we are hoping to have to present to you at the next school committee meeting. So up until then, we are still operating under the previous employee and and student handbooks. We also, in addition to those, have put out our COVID guidelines, so those are in addition to our handbooks. And at this time, I would like to respectfully request your permission to bring forward Charlie Obramski to present our handbooks and manuals.
I'll make a motion to bring Mr. Obramski.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bring forth Mr. Obramski. Roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes, please.
Ms. Cardello. Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé.
Yes, so many affirmative. Welcome, Mr. Obramski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On September 9, 2020, the superintendent and administrators in the Everett Public Schools met with representatives from the Police and Fire Department to update the Everett Public Schools' flip chat, the school safety response, and the emergency operations plan. And just so the community at home knows, the school committee members received a copy of these two plans in their packet on Friday. They've had to review them and look at them. And part of our plan on an emergency basis is to use the ALICE system, which stands for Lockdown Procedure, and ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. We've had these plans for probably eight to 10 years now, so there were very minor changes that needed to be made. Most up-to-date thing that had to be changed is the superintendent alluded to a while ago. In an emergency, we will use our reverse 911 system, we will email, and now we will text parents. So that was the major change that needed to be made to these two manuals or these two plans. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Obramski and the staff. So, and I appreciate you actually explaining ALICE, because that's kind of been a thing with me, is it's we become familiar with the acronyms, but every year, we have new students in our schools. So where would a family find these if they were curious? Would it be on the website, once approved?
Ms. Lambert, over the years, by meeting with the Police and Fire, we decided not to put these plans out to the public, because we don't want someone who may do harm to a school to know how we would plan a defense, maybe paint them, if that's the right word. So that tomorrow, if we approve these, I will email all staff members in the public schools, but we don't put them out to the public on our website for that reason.
Okay, so I would ask, since the handbook is being put in place, that, because currently the ALICE procedure is not detailed in there, and I have a story about it, I could tell you another time, but so just to make sure that our parents are familiar with, it doesn't just say that we'll follow the Everett School Safety Plan, but that it gives some detail and some more information in an appropriate format for our families so that they understand.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, try to respond and work with Ms. Lambert on this.
Go ahead.
Lambert, I understand exactly what you're talking about, so we will, I will meet with Mr. Norman, because he does, Mr. Eric Norman, the high school principal, because he does the high school handbook, Ms. Canty, the Human Resources Director, and go over the shelter and place procedures and the lockdown procedures, so that there is some sort of information for the parents.
Yeah, I think that's extremely helpful, especially for elementary parents, and we get an influx of new students every year, so I think it's always helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Mrs. Lambert's point. You know, ALICE can be confusing, and beyond the handbook, and we've talked about this before in the past, especially a couple of years ago when there was a major incident in the city. The need to have some type of education accessible and available for parents and students, whether it's a section on our website with appropriate videos, with some type of information to download. It's imperative that, especially as we're reaching out with this new parent engagement about, you know, the start of school, but also adding things like ALICE to it, because, you know, when something happens, you should remember, then a year goes by, a year and a half goes by, then all of a sudden, it's brand new again. And as my colleague pointed out, you know, new students, new families, why ALICE, you know, tends to be across different districts, we really have to play a role in educating people, so when something does happen, they respond accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Anyone else? So with that, I make a motion to accept the handbooks and manuals as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept these manuals as presented. Roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé.
Yes, so many affirmative, motion passes.
After say, would you have permission that I present the medical emergency plan?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Seven years ago, the state enforced by the Department of Public Health that all schools must have a medical emergency plan. Part of our plan, we can be multiple people in each building, patio, pulmonary, resuscitation, or CPR, first aid, and how to use an AED machine on automated external defibrillator. The individuals who are trained will be reached, listed in the manual, as well as the location or the school administration building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Obramski. Questions, comments? Need a
Medical motion to accept emergency medical plan as presented.
Second.
A motion made and seconded to accept the emergency medical plan, medical management plan as presented. Roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé.
Yes, so many affirmative, motion passes.
Thank you so much. So earlier this year, in a previous school committee meeting, you all had approved our work with Open Architects, a consulting firm. So number four is in regards to Open Architects and the work they have just completed for us. They have really set us up to be in a strong place for continued fiscal management. We look forward to continuing the partnership with them through the transition to a new financial system as per the city rollout. But at this time, I would respectfully request your permission to bring forward Open Architects, who has been currently supporting us with the FY 2021 All Funds Budget Analysis and Initial Summary of Findings on our financial systems. So I'd like to invite Seth Racine and Lois Rowe from Open Architects.
I'll make a motion to invite the guests.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to invite Seth and Lois from Open Architects. Before us, roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Abrazé.
Yes, so many affirmative. Seth and Lois, welcome.
Good evening. It is our pleasure to present to you tonight. And before we get to our presentation, we would be remiss if we did not thank the Everett Public Schools' finance staff. We were, they were incredibly patient and generous with their time, especially with all of our requests and information, and so this would not be possible without all of their help these last few months. We'll pull up here a presentation that we've prepared for tonight. So as noted, for the last few months, we have been working with the Everett Public Schools staff. Let's see here. And so our focus really has been to both develop a much deeper understanding for the current year budget, especially as it was developing. Earlier tonight, you heard about, for example, a number of entitlement grants that were just recently approved, and so as part of this process, we were sort of assessing these grants and what they would come in at, and how would they be spent and fit into the overall plan, the district. As well as during this process, we started to gather an initial assessment of the district's financial systems. So very briefly, so you understand at least some of the initial outcomes. One is that we have developed a very strong FY 21 budget file, so that your budget, it is a strong balanced budget, supports the reopening plan outlined earlier by the superintendent. We also created, been able to create one place for all the We also created, been able to create one place for all the relevant information. And then this is coming at one of the most challenging years in memory. As we look ahead, we're going to, we'll talk a little bit about this, there are just a number of uncertainties that we all know about. And it is so important that the district leadership and finance staff have the right information, the analysis and the tools to be able to adjust and amend their plans accordingly, to make sure that, that all of the resources are being used in the best manner to best support the students that need. And so what you're going to be hearing a lot from, from me tonight is really sort of as we look ahead to be thinking always about analysis and systems. How do we improve the systems that we have or that we need to have? As well as what is the continual analysis that we need to be doing to make sure that, that we are spending the resources in the best way we can with so much uncertainty out there. And what we've really outlined here is, it really is, there's a lot of work and it's going to take a substantial amount of time. But, but we have also seen that this sort of approach of constant analysis and system improvement can really lead to a much, much stronger place so that Everett's leaders have the information and tools necessary. As mentioned earlier, as part of this process that we created a budget file where a whole bunch of information that is, that's usually kept in, in other systems was all in one place. And it was across all different funding sources from the general fund to various different grants to the revolving fund, to thinking about personnel and position information. And we all put it into one place so that, that the district leaders could focus on the plan. And so then the financial leadership and staff could figure out how best to support that plan using all of the funds and, and resources needed across all different grants and the general fund and such. As part of this, you'll note here that there's a system improvement here. As part of this file, we did actually create a position control database that has created brand new position numbers for every position, both filled and vacant in the district. As it's so important to have a strong position control process seen in many districts to make sure that, that the funding is available for any position and that any backfilling, that there's a control to it as well. Now, I mentioned before that, that the district is in a really great situation and not every district can actually even say that. Again, there's been so much uncertainty and, and the focus appropriately for every district across Massachusetts and frankly, the country has been on reopening. But some districts are in a better financial situation than others. And I'm happy to say that the Everett Public Schools with their district leadership and financial staff have created a situation where the FY 21 All Funds Budget, both grants, federal and state grants, as well as the general fund, is able to appropriately support the district's reopening plan. But I would be remiss if I didn't also talk about just the enormous uncertainty as we look ahead. As many of you know, there's a number of changes associated with this pandemic. And what this really does is heighten the need to make sure that there's a number of, that, that the information is available, the most instant information is available to district leaders and that they're able to create numerous scenarios depending on what may end up happening. While there's always going to be uncertainty in every school year, I mean, the, what the potential for changes in enrollment to the uncertainty with state aid, to thinking about the possibility of new federal grants and other new needs that'll be coming up associated with pandemic, with remote learning and with hybrid learning. It's just so important to constantly making sure that district leaders have the financial information in front of them. But as part of this process, we mentioned that first, we, we, in, in this, we pulled together a very comprehensive current year budget. And we pulled it together from a number of different resources. And on the left here, you'll sort of see the current financial systems and a lot of key information is in a number of different systems. From the finance, the general ledger and soft write to the payroll system called Millennium. There's, there's also various Excel files being used. Information in the student information system, Aspen. And so it's a number of different places and what we're able to do, again, with the assistance of the Everett Public School finance staff, we're going to pull it all together, a lot of key information into, into it in one place. But we were in this, if we didn't also then, when we look ahead, in this intermediate step, we think about, can we expand the use of the current systems that we have where appropriate? Are there functions of these systems that we might be able to use in new ways or add information that might be better housed in, for example, the Millennium Payroll Service or in software? The other part in this intermediate phase is to really think about, are there new systems that could best support the school district's needs for, for what they really need as they look ahead over the next few years? And there could, it could be a new, could be a new software system or an interim sort of support system that they're going to need as they look ahead. But then finally, to the right, you know, ultimately, you know, we would strongly recommend to really consider a more comprehensive financial system, oftentimes referred to as an ERP system, where a lot of this information and key functions are not housed in separate systems, but all in one. And it can limit, and so that way more time can be spent, spent on analysis, on review and less on sort of time consuming processes that are just inherent with numerous different systems. As you look ahead, you know, I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation that, that we really think about the work in terms of the improvements, in terms of analysis and systems. And that starts now, it starts and it continues for the rest of the fiscal year and well beyond. Really thinking about what are some of the key pieces of work that we need to be doing, constantly analyzing key issues? How do we think about, in the, so in the short term, what are some targeted analysis that should be run? And from a systems perspective, thinking about implementing the position control process that we, that we introduced in those last couple of months. Assessing the current systems and creating a systems map of what could be needed or what to be expanded. As you look ahead for the next, in the medium term, really starting to do a lot of scenario planning and projections. I mentioned before, you know, unlike it, really unforeseen to, from many, many years is we really don't have a good sense of what's going to be happening, whether that's at the state level or the federal level. But that doesn't mean that you, we can't do more work. It just means we need to be running a lot of different scenarios and planning what happens with changes in enrollment? What happens with state aid? What happens with different grants? And what would we do in scenario A, B, or C? And then really thinking about how do we deepen those systems, like for example, expanding the use of, of current systems to new areas that they're, they're able to do. And so finally, longer term, beyond this year even, again, cannot stress continuing to do the analysis and scenario planning, we will not be out of this woods for a while. But then really reconsidering at a, at a much deeper level in terms of systems, should there be a new, more comprehensive ERP system, for example, in conjunction with the city? And thinking through potentially redesigning how the financial information is coded and also known as the chart of accounts. This next slide is just more of a visual of how like certain analysis work and the systems work continues over, over the rest of the, of the, of the school year and how it can, it can go into different months and sort of how it overall supports each other as you think through the budget process, as you think through the, the different changes to systems. Finally, I also want to mention that, that we have seen this, this approach in terms of continual and deeper analysis and system improvement in conjunction. We have seen this work in a district. It was mentioned when I, when I had the pleasure of presenting to you a couple of months ago that I had previously worked with the now Commissioner Riley, when he became the receiver in Lawrence. And, and he took a very similar approach. And thinking through, there's some short-term stuff we can do in terms of analysis and thinking about cost savings and how do we push more money down to the school level? But as well as thinking about how to, to think in the longer term about the systems that may not be implemented for a while, whether that's a year or two or three years out, but we'll start that work in the short term. As we move and, and, and that continued into the medium term, continuing to, to invest in sort of key investments noted here, like such as vacation academies for the Lawrence Public Schools at that time. But then also building interim systems, whether that is actually through Excel or other tools, but really tied to the receiver's vision. And then in the longer term, you know, that, that's when, you know, the receiver was able to really sort of codify his vision. And, and that really the analysis and the systems were in support of that vision. So again, I had, had said like, you know, I mean, this is, we, we, we have reviewed this again with, with incredible support and assistance from the Everett Public Schools leadership team and the financial staff. And there is a lot of work in this change and it's not overnight, it's not quick. That, that this is about changing the systems that have been in place for a very long time. But the outcome is so valuable that where district leaders and school leaders have the information that they can make key decisions relatively quickly and make sure that resources are being targeted to the students that they need. Making sure also that this is an extraordinarily complex system, as you well know, that for districts and what they run, but that there are controls, a processes in place. And ultimately, most important, that the superintendent's vision is leading the work and the systems are in support of that vision. And that instead of having a vision being limited by what the systems can and cannot do. So with that, I am happy to take any questions and any discussion that may have.
Questions?
If you could stop sharing your screen, please.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Oh, now I see people. Okay. Questions? Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the people of Open Architects. I'm welcome. I've been anticipating this presentation for, for a long time now. So a number of questions. First off, a year ago, September 4th, 2019, the School Finance Task Force report was presented to in a joint, joint session of the city council and the school committee. Was anything in that document taken into consideration during your analysis?
Absolutely. I'll start and if my colleague wants to join, she can. I, it was really helpful actually with how you pointed that out at the beginning of this work, because that sort of served as a baseline, as introductory reading. And so that we were able to sort of hit the ground running, using that as an understanding and build off of that.
Okay. So within that report, it talked about weak controls and back in 2018, we, we had a financial meltdown where we had more people than we had budgeted. With your analysis, with our current systems, can that happen again? Or is there some type of stopgap measurements that will send the flag, send an alert? So we don't repeat what happened in 2018?
Yeah, thank you. So that was actually, one of, one of the things that came out of this is creating position numbers. So that, and I want to explain a little bit more about this, where every position is independent of, of the person in it and that there is now a position number to it. Tied to, so for example, if, if there is at every school, if there's multiple grade three sections, there's a specific number to each grade three position. And that number allows for a control where if that position becomes vacant and that district and, and that school, for example, wants to backfill the position, that it can't go and be backfilled without prior approval from the financial leadership of the district. If, for example, a new position wanted to be created, they would need a position number to be able to do that. And that number would have to be created by the financial staff. So it is an interim step of a process, as you noted. Though sometimes in a, in, for example, a more comprehensive ERP system, you can automate these steps and so that you literally can't hire somebody without having a specific position number. But that, that are, those are some of the limitations of the current financial systems, but we knew that couldn't wait without having. So we created this position database file.
Okay. So a while back, the former HID director presented to the School Finance Review Commission on the Munis system, because it was recommended, you know, one of the 10 recommendations was to come up with the statutory software. Come to find out, you know, I saw that you did it in Lawrence. I mean, did, did, did you end up implementing Munis in Lawrence?
We did.
Was it an existing system when you recommended it or did they bring it in?
We brought it in.
You brought it in. So it's my understanding, you know, that's, that's a joint effort by the entire city of Everett, which could take millions of dollars in a number of years. So I sensed that, you know, it was something that would happen anytime soon and the thought at that point that we could get more out of Millennium. And in your presentation, you talked about getting more out of our custom, current systems. Is there more we can get out of Millennium and, and to, you know, we do upgrade to an ERP system, if at all we do?
Yeah, and we started to look into that. There could be some information that could be housed in these systems that might be held in separate databases. But we are in the process of starting to look a little deeper at what could be housed in Millennium. How software could be utilized more? Because as you noted, even if the funding was available for something, implementing something like Munis, it still takes a couple of years because it's so an intense implementation process.
So I noticed also, you mentioned that in, within the different systems, the student, student activities. What type of platform is that housed then? Is that part of Millennium? Is it an Excel spreadsheet? How's that managed?
So oftentimes, school activity systems are usually sort of managed at the school level. They're really sort of school-based funds. But what we have seen is the ability to bring them into something like Munis, it's actually possible to go to start to control those a little bit more in something like a more comprehensive ERP system. But right now, they're more housed at the school-based level.
Okay. And a year from now, can we see different? Would we be seeing a different format as far as the budget goes? Do you see names of line items changing? You know, you know, like for example, we have insurance on their like dues. I mean, do you see something more specific, more finite, more granular happening in a year from now?
It is, it is, it's always possible to be able to show more information. But I think what is what I, what I guess I would say is that the most important part of a budget is to be able to explain and tell the story of what is happening. And how different funds support and overall the vision, support the vision and what information is needed so you can vote and approve on the budget. You are also appropriately asking though, a more detailed question about, is a more detailed question about is the chart of accounts and how information is organized in the financial system? Is that appropriate? And should that be changed? And and I guess what I would recommend is that is a very detailed analysis to review in both terms of how you want to manage the funds as well as how it's reported then to the state. And and I would recommend that as part of a much bigger financial upgrade, that that would be the first step in the process. That may not be in time for next year's budget. But that would be considered when a new ERP system would be implemented.
Okay, and lastly, just just a comment. First of all, thank you for your time. And to you, Mr. Chairman, to the superintendent. Maybe we should consider Open Architects presenting and updating the School Finance Review Commission. At the not this meeting this week, obviously, but maybe in October. To show them that, you know, I got to be honest with you. This report come out in 2019, and I feel like we're the only ones that are talking about it. And we've taken it serious. We're making steps. We're making the investments. And so I think it's key that, you know, we tell our story through Open Architects for what we're doing to make sure that the schools are sound, financial, and I will kind of take a section exception that, you know, from a financial standpoint, we're doing well. Because one of the things that was in that task force report that wasn't a recommendation that everybody misses is, and I've got it highlighted, with a high percentage of high need students in the Everett Public Schools, an operating budget beyond the state's current minimum requirement will be necessary. And once again, we're in a budget cycle for this fiscal year where we are at the the minimum requirement by the state. Now, I understand the circumstances. It's pandemic driven. It's COVID, right? Let it go. But come next year, we need to tell City Hall what we need. It, you know, the idea that something has to be budgeted foundation, and then we go back and make it work has to stop starting next year. And with the groundwork that Open Architects is laying for us, we're going to have that story. And we're going to be able to justify every dollar that we ask for. So I look forward to working with you over the over the next year and beyond. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. From the chair, Seth Loos. One slide regarding our present system sort of caught my eye. There was one item where it said none, time and attendance. Could you explain that? What what that means? I mean, when I see none, when I see none, that sort of scares me. I'm not a numbers person, but none, none doesn't sound good.
Well, I I think what we would highlight is is oftentimes that there can be more detailed ways of tracking people's time and when they report to work, whether that's something like a time clock system or reviewing sort of the timesheet process. So I think there isn't sort of a standalone separate system doing that. Though the information and payroll is all being tracked. I think oftentimes you have seen other systems where there's a specific time and attendance system being done.
So what you're saying is we don't really, we track time and attendance, but we don't really have a system in place to track time and attendance.
I what I think what I'm saying is that there could be probably a stronger system associated with time and attendance that may be able to generate some savings of how people report their time, when they attend. But that would have to be fit. That would have to fit into sort of the management of staff in schools.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrows.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. On that note, to follow up to your question, then these perhaps would be a question to the superintendent. Are we planning something to improve these recommendations that Open Architects just mentioned regarding time and attendance?
Yes, in fact, we are working with the city as they do have the capability. Their current system does have the capability of tracking like vacation time, personal time, if that's what you're asking about in particular. And so we do have that functionality already in the city. So what we need to do is build it into the school side or actually just start to utilize it on the school side. So we will be working with Mr. Demas to implement that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Anyone else? Well, I join with Mr. Parker and everybody else in welcoming you, Seth Loos. And look forward to working with you and more presentations. Mr. Parker, sorry, go ahead.
Just a request. Can we get a copy of the presentation, please? And, you know, I like, as far as like, you know, what's next? Do we refer this matter to Finance Committee? Or is does it make sense to keep it, you know, at the discretion of the superintendent to update us on a regular basis as a committee of the whole?
Well, considering what our plan is with subcommittees later on tonight, I would I would trust in our superintendent to keep us updated on what are you looking at, monthly basis, bi-monthly basis? Madam Superintendent, how do you feel?
And I think also we had mentioned that because this year fiscally was different than in the past, that we would be giving you all quarterly updates, I believe it was. So we can also combine those with this. Of course, if anything relevant comes up earlier, we would, of course, let you know in a more timely fashion, but we can certainly roll that into those presentations.
Very good. Mr. Parker?
So I noticed from the timeline that, you know, there's the short term, midterm, and et cetera. The short term was one to two months. And am I correct? That's going to start in November?
In an October-November timeline, yeah.
Okay, so we could probably expect to see you come January with the recap of what happened in the short term. And also at that point, you know, October starts the budgeting cycle for the next fiscal school year. And we can get an update at that point, too. So you know, just from my standpoint, you know, I also want to see more tools that could be presented to the school committee on a regular basis other than, you know, bills and account sheet or the burn rate. You know, where are we? How are we doing? What's the temperature and where are we in trouble and where are we doing well? So if you could keep that in mind, I'd appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. So at this point in time, what's the committee's pleasure?
We can excuse Open Architects with what the customary thanks and, you know, accept the information, just have it placed on file as presented.
Very good. Very good. Some motions are made and seconded to excuse Seth and Lois with the customary thanks and this information be placed on file. You need a roll call for that? Might as well. Roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yeah.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes, 70 affirmative. Motion passes. Seth and Lois, thank you. Again, look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you so much. And again, I want to thank them as well. I feel like they really set us up for a strong start. And we will, we do look forward to continuing the partnership. They have completed their current scope of services with us. However, we do believe that given some of the information they were able to provide and the work they were able to take on that we would like to explore continued partnership. So before we would do that, I would certainly bring that to all of you first for approval. But as they, as they mentioned, you know, this is going to be a several year project for us to get to the place that we want to be. So we believe it is an appropriate investment moving forward. And we are already going ahead and putting in into place many of their recommendations. In fact, number five is actually an example of that, which is an update on our new processes for procurement and new hires. So with their expertise, we have, we do feel that we are better positioned to support my overall vision and our district leadership's overall vision for the district. So at this time, I would like to respectfully request your permission to bring forward Anu Janth, our Chief Financial Officer, to give an update on these new processes that we are starting to put in place in the Everett Public Schools.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bring forth Anu Janth to update us on the new process for procurements. Roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni? Mr. Abuzey?
Yes, 70 affirmative. Motion passes. Welcome, Anu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and super committee members. Thank you again for having me. I'm gonna just start by sharing my screen. So it's my fifth week here at EPS. And in that short time, I've had the opportunity to work, meet people that are also so dedicated and passionate about the work they do in service of children. So I'm truly inspired and I'm ready to start putting in the work around our financial stability, equity, and transparency in our finances. To that end, I'm extremely grateful for the work that Open Architects has done so far. I look forward to continued partnership with them. We're already taking some of their recommendations, and we want to start with some quick wins. And these are just two that I wanted to highlight today. So as Seth had gone through, Open Architects put us in a great position already by providing us with an FYI one, all funds budget and a position control file. It behooves us to have tools and processes in place so we can better manage to this. The processes we need to put in place will ensure transparency so we can make quick comparisons over time and have data ready to validate our decision making. Accountability for schools and school leaders and the district as stewards of public dollars and equity, which should be always be a key factor that grounds every decision that we make. In your packet, you would have received the memo that we will be sending out to all central staff and department heads. The memo outlines two new processes we are putting in place. In my short time here, especially given these COVID times, my team has received multiple hurried requests for obviously time sensitive back to school purchases. These requests come in via emails, maybe, you know, to multiple concerned parties, including the superintendent. The funding sources and the budget chart fields used don't seem to follow a predictable path either. Contracts that are currently in place do also need to be always scrutinized for better pricing. So this memo highlights to staff all the procurement guidelines that brings the district the best purchase value and also helps ensure our purchases are in compliance with applicable laws and district policy. Though this online form that I have a screenshot of here is the portal through which we will now have all requests that need to be submitted. This ensures that we can serve these needs in a timely and efficient manner. And that way, we have everything compiled in one, so one data source to which we can then compare to our centralized budget file. In the same way, all positions are now tied to a position control number. This helps us track and budget all our positions. So with this new position control file, we have a better handle on all the positions across the district, which is an invaluable tool since personnel accounts for 70% of our budget. We now need to make sure that we can continue to be able to do this. So while we're working on the longer term solution around a comprehensive HR or ERP system, we are streamlining all our requests for both positions and stipends through this. So this online form will now be used to track any requests that come in so that we can first then confirm that there is a budget for that position or that stipend request, and then we can start posting the position. These position, these process improvements are not revolutionary in any way, but they're just small steps we've started taking towards stability, transparency, and equity in our finances. In the long term, principals, what we hope to give principals are more is more visibility into their budgets and positions, and tools can help us better manage to that. So with that, I welcome any questions.
Questions? Ms. Sarni?
Thank you. How was that process in the past where I'm new on the school committee? Did we submit requests before in writing as well with a procedure in place?
With purchases, I mean, from from the time that I have been here, purchases have just been coming in via emails. It could be a department head, like the the music department, just sending us quotes. And then we have two or three people on our team who would put in their acquisitions and get a purchase order through the city. So it has been coming in from the time I've been here, I've seen just, it could be also COVID related, but it's it's multiple requests coming in from various places. So it could be just quotes sent to to Mr. Shaw for a lot of the online learning needs. It could be quotes from the music department directly to myself or to the superintendent. So it's all been via different emails. And then there's no comprehensive way for us to track, you know, where we are actually posting those those requisitions or expenses to. So this kind of helps us gather all the requests in one place. So the online form then feeds into a backend spreadsheet where we can then track it back to an actual budget chart field. So we have a more a better way of just tracking what expenses go onto what chart field because it also helps for historical data for next year where we can say, okay, these are the lines. It speaks a little back to what what Seth was talking about, where we want to get a little more detailed with our budget chart fields. And to get to that, we just need to understand what we're currently using these chart fields for as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Progress, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I would say that's an understatement. So this was really for, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Parker, go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So so this is, what we're doing, we're being asked to accept the new policy. So therefore, all policies have to be approved by the school committee. So therefore, I'd make a motion to accept the policy as presented and move for favorable action.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to accept the updated policy process for procurements and new hires. Roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes, 70 affirmative. Motion passes. Thank you, Anu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Roman numeral six, items submitted by school committee members. First item was Lambert. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item, I was just asking Madam Superintendent the, to provide an overview of the Black Print Professional Development and opportunities for school members to participate because I do think it's important as a body. And as Mr. Parker just said, one responsible for policy that we not only support what we're asking our teachers to learn as well as our students from a curriculum standpoint, but that we understand that in our decision making, we have a great responsibility in that although I think we always have the best of intent. that in our decision making, we have a great responsibility in that although I think we always have the best of intent without the lived experience representative of the people we're serving. I think it's important that we take a step back and recognize the learning opportunities that we have, so. Madam Superintendent, if you have an update, I would greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. So we have begun our work with Black Print. We had our first sort of orientation meeting as just a small leadership team so that we could get a better understanding of what it is that, how the fellowship is going to work. And so we had that initial meeting and they explained to us like the team that we should be putting together in order to start this work in the district. So we have done that and we will be having our first session with that larger leadership group in the beginning of October. And I actually want to thank you, Ms. Lambert, for offering to serve on that committee as well. So we have several different school leaders, district leaders, so it's a, you know, we tried to get a diversity of membership there. So this team will really essentially be responsible for, you know, starting the work as a leadership team so that we can really roll it out methodically over time. However, simultaneously, we have actually asked Black Print, even though they are incredibly busy, they have contracts through DESI with 16 different districts. But we have asked that they provide us with some training as well. So they were able to provide us training, so this is outside of the fellowship. They provided training to our teachers on one of the days and will also be making sure that you guys get all of the presentations. And it was a really wonderful presentation. We did get great feedback on it and we'll provide those links to you over the nine days of professional development. We had a meeting with them, too, to discuss the work moving forward. And they have actually, we are thinking about this in, in three more different phases with them so that they would provide three different workshops. Again, this is running parallel to the work that they are doing with us on the leadership team. So three more workshops virtually that can be provided to all of our staff. We are also, and part of what they are working on with us as a leadership team is helping us to figure out what is our plan and how are we going to, for example, we will have a subcommittee or a steering committee made up of teachers that will help us go through that work. So they're going to help us sort of make the timeline for what that will look like. And so that we can really map out very clearly, okay, what is the work that we're doing? And when we have these four professional developments that Black Print is leading for our teachers, but there are so many things that we can do in between, such as critical reading exercises. So they're going to kind of help us plan out that arc and then also train us so that we feel better able to facilitate it. So that is the current work that we're doing with them. And we're excited that they've launched it already and that they've given us some extra time of theirs in order to, to support our staff as well and not just have this just as the leadership team for this year. And so I can definitely, as we launched into that work a little bit more, come back with a coherent presentation about what that timeline and what that arc of learning is going to look like for the rest of our school year.
Thank you.
All right, so that was sort of informational purposes, correct, Ms. Lambert?
Correct.
Go to number two, to invite the student, our voice.
Who's the chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Understanding that it's informational purposes only, but I make a motion to refer it back to sponsor.
Thank you. I second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to refer item Roman numeral six, one, back to sponsor. Motion was made and seconded. Roll call, please, Addie.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Abazay?
Yes, seventy affirmative motion passes. Number two, item submitted by school committee members to invite the student, our voice, our choice members to present their work to the Subcommittee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to put this in the form of a motion to invite the student, our voice, our choice members to present at the next Subcommittee meeting for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to invite the student, our voice, our choice members to present their work to the Subcommittee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at that next Subcommittee meeting. Motion was made and seconded. Roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abazay?
Yes, seventy affirmative motion passes. Item number three, the committee to review, restructure, and consolidate the Subcommittee structure to take effect beginning the first regular meeting in January 2021. Mr. Parker?
Before I speak on the piece, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the Committee on Rules.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to refer this item to the Committee on Rules.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
So earlier today, I shared a document with my colleagues. In fact, let me step back for a moment. So tonight's agenda, we've seen a lot of things we got in continuous improvement. Whether it's the guidance by the architectures, the new policies as far as procurement and hiring go, and even getting involved with professional development, which is continuous improvement, such as Black Print. So really today, I sent out a document to my colleagues highlighting six different Subcommittee, I'm sorry, six different school committees in this surrounding area about this Subcommittee structure. On average, these six communities, which all mirror Everett, have about four standing Subcommittee's. We have 21, 23 if you count two committees, that it committees of the whole. I think it's time for us to step back, restructure, and consolidate. For example, we've got different committees on elementary schools, high school, alternative education, physical education, IDEA, FAPE, SPED, Student Activities, MCAS. They're all student related. So such as one, you know, committee, maybe called Student Achievement, you know, things of that nature is what I'm hoping that we can do. A lot of these committees had never met during my tenure. And just one more example, if I could, please. Prior to charter reform, the city council had 15 standing committees. Today, they have five. So I think it's time for us to get out of the lead pencil, the lead pencil number two era into the 21st century from our own rules of standpoint. So with that, I'd ask to refer this to the Committee on Rules. But also, I'd ask each and every one of you to reach out to me, you know, privately, personally, and tell me what you think these committees might look like. And so we can come to something rather quickly and hit the ground running come January 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Motion made and seconded to refer this item to Subcommittee on Rules. Roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abazay?
Yes. Seventy affirmative motion passes. Roman numeral seven, Subcommittee Report. Are there any Subcommittee reports? Nope.
There are none.
Roman numeral eight, Bills and Payrolls.
There are none.
There are none. We have Roman, no unfinished business, number 10, no new business, number 11, oh hearings. Before I entertain a motion to go into executive session, if I may from the chair, I didn't do this at the beginning, I'd like to recognize in this order, a death and then a birth. The death is Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Where I work, it's funny, as a 64-year-old man, I really am the driving force when it comes to women's rights. It's more than just a hobby of mine, but Ruth Bader Ginsburg did for women's rights what Justice Thurgood Marshall did for African Americans' rights in this country. Just an absolutely amazing jurist, judge, and a lady. And probably her best friend on the Supreme Court was Anton Scalia. And no one in terms of politics could be more further apart than those two. And it just symbolizes, you know, before she left us, I know she hoped that our country could sort of be more along those lines where, you know, people like Justice Ginsburg and Justice Scalia could go on vacation together, be dear friends, even though they disagreed with each other, they always disagreed with each other respectfully. And just like to recognize her, and as I look around at all of the women, you know, now, not just on the School Committee, but our administration. Again, her passing is it really is important. Her presence was important, let's put it that way. The odds of the next Supreme Court Justice replacing her being like her are pretty slim based on who's going to be picking the person. And with that, when there's a death, I'd like to welcome, I'd like to recognize Mr. Panerisi, who for the first time along these lines now has a granddaughter and like to welcome her. So it's sort of a women-themed last thing to say here before we go into executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. First girl in 20 years on my side going.
At this time, at this time, congratulations again. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session where we will actually adjourn from executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation where the, to have an open meeting, it would be detrimental on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And I so declare that. Mr. Parker?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could put that in form of a motion that per Master of Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, the discussed strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And Chair, so declare that we move into a second session.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to enter executive session. And from the chair, people that I would like at this executive session are all School Committee members, Superintendent Tahiliani, and Deputy Superintendent Si. Other than that, that's who I am requesting at the executive session. Roll call, vote, please, Addie.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Abazay?
Yes, seventy affirmative. And also, Addie, of course, you're welcome. You're a necessary person. So as of right now, the Everett School Committee is now going into executive session. Good night, everyone.
Good night, folks.